Good evening. City Council's regular agenda of June 12, 2023. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas, will conduct a regular meeting on June 12, 2023, beginning at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with Section 551.127B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer and quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public, and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on Channel 16 and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Herea, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A?
Present.
Councilmember District D?
Present.
Councilmember District C? It looks like he is not with us at the moment. Councilmember District D?
Present.
And Mayor?
Present. Thank you, Kira. We will now have our invocation. I will lead us in invocation, and I would like to ask Councilmember Ross to lead us in the pledge. Let's stand.
Most holy and gracious God, we thank you certainly for your presence in our lives, and we thank you for this community that you've given us to call home, this great city of Lamarck. We, Lord, pray that you would lead and guide us as stewards of this great city, Lord, to do what's in the best interest of your, all of your citizens, all of the residents of this great city. And so help us in our deliberations. We ask it all in your holy name. Amen.
Hey, well, that leads us now to our proclamations. I've asked Councilwoman Yancey, who is a representative of District A, home of Alexander Francis Pratt, to step forward with me. This is a proclamation that saddens all of us in the city of Lamarck. We were certainly disturbed and saddened by the loss of former councilmember Alexander Pratt, who was much more than a councilmember. He was a community leader, a community builder, one of our, one of the thinkers, one of the folks in our community that helped us to move this great city forward. We were unable to attend the services because I believe that I was out of town as well as Councilwoman Yancey. But we certainly wanted to make sure that this council and this community recognize what a great man we lost in Mr. Pratt. And so it is with sadness in our heart, not only myself and the council, but the rest of this council, the rest of the city administration, and I would believe 100% of our community, this proclamation will be delivered. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck proclamation, whereas Alexander Thomas Martin Pratt entered this world on September 19 and 1938 in St. Martinville, Louisiana, and whereas Mr. Pratt truly held the love of learning, holding a bachelor's of arts in history with a minor in library of science, a master of arts in history with a minor in political science, both obtained from Prairie View A and University, and attended a host of courses from the University of Houston system, Texas A&amp;M University, the University of Texas, and the University of North Carolina. And whereas Mr. Pratt, love of education not only led him to be a lifelong learner, but an educator as well, having taught at Woodland Junior High, Prairie View A and University, Galaxy College, Texas A&amp;M University, and in the College of the Walls, and in the College without Walls, excuse me, program in partnership with the Federal Aviation Agency. And whereas Mr. Pratt served as the first African-American councilmember and mayor pro tempore for the city of Lamarck, serving on the council for eight years with honor and integrity, opening doors for many to follow Mr. Pratt. And whereas Mr. Pratt said he wanted strength, power, compassion, service, and determination, and now he has resolved the city of Lamarck more than the loss of Mr. Alexander Pratt and family, friends, and community that loved him. And now therefore we the mayor and city council by virtue of our authority vested by the city of Lamarck, in Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim as Alexander Pratt Memorial Day in the city of Lamarck, and do hereby urge everyone in the community to encourage one another at this time of bereavement and testimony where I witness my hand as the seal of the city of Lamarck this third day of June 2023. Keep it on air. Let's give Alexander Pratt a round of applause. As I said before, certainly I was out of town, unable to be a part of any homegrown celebration. But we were definitely with you in our thoughts and prayers, and we most certainly wanted this community to acknowledge all the work that your father, your husband, that Mr. Pratt done. I, of course, being representative of District A, being your also representative for so many years, I've come to know your family, and I've come to know your husband, father, as a man in particular, and I know that he will be missing out on you. I'm going to ask the Councilwoman Yancey, who was certainly his last representative, and also out of town that day, if she would have some words to say.
First of all, to the Pratt family, we are so grateful for your service. You guys still serve in so many ways. When we got the news, which is that we got almost a week after he passed, the entire community was shocked. He is such, he was such a man of history, and he loved this city. Can I tell you, Mr. Pratt loved Lamarck late on street. He loved that shit, and just talking to him, getting to know him, because we both shared a love of history, and I might, even though we could sit here, we would talk for hours about the history of Lamarck. If I'm clear, he said, "Sit down, let me tell you really about Lamarck." And so him and Mr. Hunter showed me a lot, and I am ever so grateful for the time you sacrificed, and you have given all the kids of Lamarck, and the sacrifice that you have given. He is such a legacy, and I hope that we will do everything we can to continue that positive spirit that Mr. Pratt, and you, of course, Mr. Pratt. And you, of course, you're the sons. I never knew I loved your dad, because you kind of walked in, I'm like, "Oh, my daddy." So you guys do so much. Thank you so much. And sometimes we don't feel enough, but you all are setting your pioneers. Your dad was a pioneer. A pioneer, sometimes it's a long walk when you're a pioneer. But we want to say that you will never be forgotten. Thank you so much.
Very good. You are mayor.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
This is Mrs. Mabel Pratt, also our school board representative for the Lamarck district. And so we honor the honorable Mrs. Mabel Pratt this time of year.
We appreciate you honoring Alex because he loved the city.
Thank y'all very much for that.
Thank you.
It's hard for my mom right now, but y'all understand.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey. Juneteenth. And here, are you coming forward? This is Vera Belle Gary, one of the oldest members of our community. I believe she is here to receive the proclamation for Juneteenth as a representative of the Belle-Brittin-Hopgood-Callwell family as a representative of 1867 settlement and the Juneteenth committee. Is that right? All right. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck proclamation, whereas the pursuit of freedom is and always has been a fundamental strength in American society, beloved and shared by all. And whereas Galaxy County is the birthplace of Juneteenth, marking the official end of slavery in the United States, two and a half years after the city drew up the Advancement Proclamation by President Lincoln. And whereas on June 9, 2023, the city of Lamarck held this inaugural gateway to Juneteenth Gala, marking the official beginning of Juneteenth celebrations in Oregon. Now being resolved, the city of Lamarck reaffirms its commitment to the promotion of racial healing, reconciliation, restoration, and justice as is the spirit of Juneteenth, and now therefore we the mayor and city council do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth in the city of Lamarck, and do hereby urge all citizens, business and businesses, and professional bodies to participate in this operation and testimony where, where I hand, witness my hand as the seal of the city of Lamarck this 12th day of June 2023. Keep it, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you. I feel so special.
You are special.
That I am no unutilized jury to be the fact.
God bless you.
And many, many, God bless you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Did you want to, hold on, hold on, here, if you want to. All right.
Thank you.
Kansas, Kansas.
He is good, baby.
Friends, we recognize that Juneteenth is a federal proclamation. But if next proclamation, we certainly want to reaffirm rights of others, of our citizens, and members of our great society, nigh greatly. And so it is without any further the Office of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck proclamation, and this is for pride. And so if you are here to observe this proclamation for pride, you may come forward at this. Mary Tandler, I enjoy you with.
I am a member. I'm from right here on Lamarck. Yes, you, I'm a member of the community, and after years we just like to work.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. Office of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck proclamation, where 2023 is the 53rd Pride Month Celebration, a time when millions of people come together in support of the LGBTQ community. And whereas celebration began in 1970 to commemorate the Stonewall Rebellion of June 28, 1969, at the point of the gay abortion movement in the United States. And whereas we celebrate resilience, the resilience of the LGBTQ community and their hard-won victories of increased acceptance and equality, continuously moving towards a better, more inclusive, safer people for all. And whereas we take this month to celebrate the advantages of equality, and we also acknowledge that there is still important work to be done across intersections of identity to create a land of equality for all. And whereas the city of Lamarck was tired of, tired of being a safe city for all people, regardless of their sexual or gender, gender identity or expression, and firmly believe all people should be treated with dignity and respect, and now therefore we the city council of the city of Lamarck declare as the month of Juneteenth 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Lamarck, and together we stand with the community, loved ones and allies, and continue to demand equal rights for all. And testimony where, where I hand as the seal of the city of Lamarck this 12th day of June 2023. Keep it, Mayor. Let's give a round of applause for Pride Month.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests and cherished members of the Lamarck community, as we gather here to celebrate Pride Month, it is essential to acknowledge that our journey towards equality and acceptance extends far beyond the boundaries of this month. While Juneteenth holds a special place in our hearts as Pride Month, let us remember that there are 11 other months in the year where the LGBTQ plus community needs your unwavering love and support. Now more than ever, we must come together as allies, advocates, and champions of inclusivity, ensuring that the spirit of acceptance permeates every facet of our society. Let us recognize that the vibrant policy does not end with the proclamation or a month of celebration. It requires an ongoing commitment to dismantle prejudice, discrimination, and systemic barriers. It necessitates challenging, updating, outdated beliefs, advocating for policy reform, and fostering safe spaces for individuals of all sexual organizations and gender identities and rights. In this journey, we need your love, support, and allyship every day of the year. By standing with us, by educating yourself and others, by amplifying our voices, and by embracing diversity, you become agents of change. Together, we can forge a future with equality where equality reigns supreme, where every individual feels free and validated, and where the LGBT plus community can navigate the world without fear, judgment, or discrimination. So as we celebrate Pride Month, let us carry this awareness forward, reminding ourselves and others that love knows no calendar constraint. Together, let us strive to create a society where acceptance is not confined to a single month, but rather becomes an inherent part of our collective consciousness. Thank you for your continued love, support, and dedication to building the world that cherishes and celebrates the LGBTQ plus community throughout the year, together we create and write our future for all. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. All right, we move now toward close to our proclamations with Stop the Violence Week. And this is one that we will present to one of our own. Councilwoman Kim Yancey was elected under our Safe City Initiative, and she hit the ground running with her vision of a safe city. And that looked like this Stop the Violence Week. This is the second year that you have been able to provide this for the citizens of Lamarck, for your residents. You want to have some time to kind of share with them some of the highlights on what happened this time. And you're stopping on this.
Yeah, I did want to thank everyone that participated in that for the second year Pride is Down in our city. As a result of our gratefulness for working together, working with you, working with our chief for community awareness, community, community. Has played a big, big part of that, the community watching as well, working with the principals, parent groups. This past year, all of us collectively made a difference. I believe if you make a, you make a dent, you make a dent, you can say a big, too, later, we're going to make a hole, you're going to make a difference. And so what we have gained in the last few years, we've been, we have closed down one notorious workhouse that was here in my particular district. My district is one of the larger districts, but we had some of the high crime. Today, we have LED lights going down that road. We have residents finally speaking up and trying to actually solve problems. So I believe that you have to be intentional. We've got shirts for our kiddos to wear so that they can see that when you work together, when you're intentional, you have a cover and a goal, you can get it done. So that's what we did at my high school, that's what we did at Giles Middle School. We had a basketball tournament where we had over 75 young people from the age of 16 till around 30 participate. We had prayer and talked about, and I believe you tell the kid to put a gun down, got something else in your hand. And that's something else with the problem of mainland that worked with us to provide scholarships, they provided opportunity and information about what you have. I believe that God gives you all the tools that you need to be successful. You just have to find the tools. So Stop the Violence Week is about helping kiddos and helping our community members find those tools they need, that we have in our community to be successful. Therefore, we want you by us. So thank you, Mayor, to be thankful for your support, and we hope to have where your stats be.
Office of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck proclamation, whereas in the year 2021, the city of Lamarck took advantage to become one of the safe cities in Texas, implementing a safe city administration with the cops and community policing, citizen participation, and medical records to advance further safety and security of citizens protected by, whereas Councilwoman Kim Yancey a district has worked to advance and advance those goals of the Safe City Initiative, driving a tenure on city council. Whereas for the second year, Councilwoman Kim Yancey, along with the help of community partners, organized Stop the Violence a week of motivation, education, spirituality, and community. Whereas we recognize, Councilwoman Yancey, the residents of District A and the community at large for their continued commitment to strengthening our community. Now being resolved, that the community of Lamarck appreciates and celebrates all individuals involved in this Stop the Violence Initiative and looks forward to its growth and progress. Now therefore, we the mayor and city council by virtue of our authority vested by the city of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 23 through 28, 2023, as Stop the Violence Week in the city of Lamarck, and do hereby urge everyone in the community to congratulate all the hard work and education required to produce this in testimony where, where I hand as the seal of the city of Lamarck this 9th day of May 2023. Keep it, Mayor. Let's give a round of applause for Stop the Violence Week. It's a wonderful week for us as we continue to try to be a safer community.
Did your game mean to win?
All right, yes, ma'am. All right, I think we are now down to our recognition. Mr. Garcia, if you'd like to come. Every year, I think this is the third year in a row council, previous to this council, and this council has affirmed our youth involvement in local and municipal government. In fact, you hear a lot about this internship program that they have in the city of Texas City with young people, with youth, as well as the one that they've implemented this year recently. But the truth is that Lamarck was the person to implement a youth internship program. And it happened several councils ago. And we're continuing that tradition this year. This council has graciously afforded Mr. Garcia the right to, I believe you have 13 interns.
13 present, two still pending. So we're going to hit our goal of 15.
We're going to allow you to introduce those interns to us.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Want to take the opportunity to say that we've got a great group. I got a chance to meet with them earlier. They actually just went on a tour with Chris. And I'm going to ask them all to please rise when their name is said, and we would like to identify what school you're at. If you could just let us know what school you're representing. Ms. Shania Richardson. All right, Christian Ramsey. Anthony Webb.
The Lamarck High School.
Agmed Nofal. Megan McCauley. Zion Thomas.
All right.
Aria Captain. I'm going to butcher this. Amy Ree. Can you correct me? Amari, I'm sorry. Thank you. Louis Vasquez. Deordi Escobar.
All right, boss.
Christian Stone. Ms. Nelson, I don't want to, can you correct me on the spelling? Danaya Nelson. Absolutely. And Kiara Lindsay. We also want to recommend and just acknowledge that we have two other members that are still going through the process, and will be formally welcomed here very soon. The group had a chance to sit and meet with some of the staff today, do their onboarding paperwork. They also took a tour and are ready to hit the ground running as early as tomorrow. Program, they are allotted a chance to grow and hopefully expand on their leadership capabilities throughout the actual summer.
I think you missed one. I think you missed one.
Yes. Can you pronounce your name for me? I'm sorry.
Say it loud.
And tell us what school you're representing. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Let's give these interns a round of applause.
Thank you so much to Mayor, Council for the continued support. As Mayor mentioned, the program really started with 10. We were challenged to get to 15, and not only did we get to the 15 last year, but we were able to do so again this year. So thank you for your continued support.
Very good. I suggest that you take a picture with your interns, a pre-picture, a post-picture, so I'm going to get out the way and I love you all together.
Please, let's go, everybody join.
A moral last.
Absolutely. Council, if you could please just stand right behind them so we can all be part of the picture.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
Very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for your patience. This was, we did not have a meeting at the end of May, and so there were several proclamations and acknowledgements that we had to make from last month. So now we're back on track with the business of today, which is citizens' participation is limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, get the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, your address, and the item you wish to speak about. Applies to Texas Open Meetings at the city, may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press six to star six, excuse me, to mute or unmute yourself if you're participating by telephone. Press the unmute button if you're attending via Zoom on smartphone, tablet, or computer, which is normally a microphone icon. If you're standing, if you're attending in person, please approach the podium to your right and to my left, and you may have your time to speak. Now, are there any persons online wishing to speak? We now move to those that are here with us tonight. Mr. Rashad Loftus. Welcome, Rashad. Name and address, as always.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Rashad Loftus, 309 Johnson Street. I'm here this evening to ask the council to, well, first off, I know it's budget season to be coming up, and I'm asking you all to please think about the Code Enforcement Department and Public Works Department. It is my belief that those two departments really need bodies and dollars. Bodies and dollars. And what I mean by that is they need more people and more money in their pockets. Because if they don't, if we don't have the bodies, then we can't get the jobs done. And there's a lot of jobs out there right now that I see daily that needs done. And if those individuals don't have dollars in their pockets, they go somewhere else to get the money. And then we lose good people. And we've lost good people. And in order to keep this city running, we need those people here. And I'm quite sure y'all understand that. So when y'all go into y'all budget season, please consider that. We need bodies and dollars in the employee's pocket. As a Public Works employee myself, I understand that wholeheartedly, that if you don't have the tools, do the job. And if you don't have the money to do the job, then things get left out, and people leave and go elsewhere. So consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loftus. Mr. Robert Midstitch. Welcome, Robert. Name and address, as always.
Robert Midstitch, 24 North Curlew, Lamarck. This is about the recall for Councilman Carlson. The petitions were turned in more than sufficient. More than sufficient, more people wanted to sign than we could get to. Mr. Carlson, I would ask again that you step down. Because by not doing so is nothing but a slap in the face to your constituents. And to the rest of the citizens in Lamar. Because if you had followed social media, you'll see that everybody has said, step down. There was even a, a poll put out in the Galveston Daily News overwhelmingly that said, step down. We just recently, two, a couple of weeks ago, had um. A lady city councilwoman in Santa Fe, she stepped down. Now that council immediately has called for a special election to replace her. And the resolution tonight drags out your election to remove you. Until November. Now that's a reflection on this council lawsuit. Now, charter does state, you know, to have the election at the next available regular session. But it does not preclude this council from calling for a special election. Doesn't prevent that. Santa Fe is perfect proof. And to do nothing as a council, that's a reflection on y'all. You've said nothing, you won't remove him, you won't censure, you won't do anything. It's on you. Your election is coming up next year. People remember what you do and what you don't do. Mr. Carlson. You have been gone now and living in Oregon. I wish you the best, but please step down. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Let's move now to six, item six, minutes. Council retreat minutes, June sixth, twenty twenty three. We'll take all these at once, if that's okay with you, Gus.
That's fine.
Special meeting minutes, uh, May fifteenth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty three. I will entertain a motion.
They're moved.
Say a second.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections?
I, I do, Mayor.
Yes.
On the retreat section, with the minutes on the retreat, I would just add if, if there's consensus. Uh, just several items, um, just in terms of the discussion that occurred during retreat. I think all of us agreed that there was a special commitment to effectively communicating budget priorities. Uh, especially during the upcoming budget workshop. I wanted us to effectively communicate that to our residents. And uh, the other thing that uh, I wanted us to, to perhaps communicate as a council, that we agree. That we agree upon that, the values that we upheld, that we uphold. Especially respectful disagreement in our community. Respectful disagreement. We value diversity in Lamarck, and we pledge cooperation, trust, and mutual respect. At the heart of all we do. And then the last, just one thing is that, as I, I think as a council, we strive to be. To find ourselves in win-win situations instead of a win-lose scenario. That's just the additions that I'd like to, that I got from our council retreat.
And, and a discussions uh, uh, concerning those additions that uh, Mayor Protem would like to add to the minutes. Hearing none, Gus, is that, is that enough of an addition for us to get an amendment, or are we okay?
That, that's fine. I, I believe Kiara and I got what was said. So if council makes a motion to include that in the um.
Would you like to make a motion?
That's yes, please.
I'll entertain a motion to include uh, Mayor Protem's comments in our minutes from the retreat. The second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the addition of those comments? Hearing none will vote on the addition of those comments. All in favor? Any opposed? Now, any further discussion on not only those minutes, but the minutes of special meeting? Uh, May fifteenth and regular meeting, May eighth. Hearing none will call for vote. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Seven, public hearing, conduct a public hearing to hear input, uh, public input on seven, one ordinance number letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 four. Amending the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget for various funds expenditures by decreasing various funds, fund balances. Increasing certain expenditures to individual budget accounts in various funds and increasing certain revenues. And various funds set forth in Exhibit A. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we would like to provide an amendment. Gus, I'll probably need to lean, uh, lean to you on this. Uh, this item came before you first on May eighth with the uh, with the amendments.
Uh, we need to do the public hearing first.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, my bad, my, my fault. I am down in the ordinances, excuse me. We are now in a public hearing. Thank you for that, Gus. Um, let's go back. Let's close this regular meeting at.
Six thirty eight.
And let's open the public hearing at?
Six thirty.
Is there any person wishing to speak on item seven, not item eight? Uh, ordinance uh, number O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 four. Any person wishing to speak on ordinance number O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 four? Yes, sir. Please approach. Name and address for the record.
Once again, Rashad Loftus, three oh nine Johnson Street. So I'm, I, I, I guess I'm trying to get clarification on this. So are y'all trying to amend budgets for each department? Is that what this is?
Now we can invite Mr. Caesar into the discussion.
Answer your question. No, Mr. Loftus, uh, this is not for each individual apartment. This is anything that was found at the close of the fiscal year. So any invoices for last fiscal year that may have come after the fact.
Okay.
And it would have been billed afterwards that we would have closed the fiscal year. However, these are invoices that may have been wrongfully. Put into one account when they should have got like this fiscal year, should have gone to the other or any other transaction.
Okay, that's the question I had, certainly.
Any other persons wishing to speak on uh, ordinance O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 four? Very good. We'll close the public hearing at?
Six forty.
We'll open the regular meeting at?
Six forty.
Six forty. We're now at item eight, finally. Ordinance is discussion pops, possible action regarding approving eight one. Uh, ordinance number uh, letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 four. Amending the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget for various funds expenditures by decreasing. Various funds, fund balances, increasing certain expenditures to individual budget accounts. In various funds and increase, increasing certain revenues in various funds as set forth in Exhibit A. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is the item that I meant to describe earlier, and I apologize. Uh, there are several amendments as we explained when Mr. Loftus came forward, that when we presented this for first reading on May eighth. There were some expenses that were not uh, allocated or determined at that time. There's been other invoices that we have been uncovered since. So it almost behooves us the fact that we had such a time in between. You approve this under first reading on May eighth would subsequently would make tonight your second reading, however. What we are asking is to make tonight first reading because we have some updates available to you that were handed out to you in your folder earlier tonight. Uh, of some other bills that were brought, uh, that, that came to the fact even after we presented to you back in May eighth. Uh, including some legal fees, also some uh, expenditures due to, to electricity, or billed after the fact. And they were in, in a, inappropriately uh, billed to this fiscal year where they should have gone to last fiscal year. Those items during your folder, that's the only few items that are different from what you may hate. So what we ask you tonight is instead of making tonight the second reading, to make this subsequently another first reading with these new updates that are included in your folder tonight. Your consideration.
Good, good, good. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Garcia?
So on what page? Cause it's, we just, we just received it. So what page were the amendments on?
And the, you should read two sets of documents. One of them is the staff agenda that explains exactly what they are. Uh, it's got Miss Susie Koo dated June twelfth. Along with the actual ordinance that came before you and the revised Exhibit A that is shown. It looks like this.
Right.
And to highlight, the biggest differences from this and what was shared with you on May eighth are the two uh, outstanding months of electric bills. And a few of the legal fees that were put through professional services in the wrong location.
Legal fees and um, and electric bills?
Electric bills, two months worth of electric bills.
So instead of us having a second reading to pass this, we are now going back to the first reading so that we can give the public more time to. Respond to this new, the new changes, which are electric bills and legal fees.
Absolutely, Mayor. Exactly correct.
Makes sense. Does anybody have any more, uh, further questions for Mr. Garcia on this item?
Uh, Mayor, make a question for you.
Yes, sir.
My name is, perhaps, so your attorney, procedurally, would we have to go ahead and? Vote down the, the second or just?
Yeah, no, no. Uh, what, what the charter says is that if, if y'all, um, you have a first reading. And then you're supposed to pass it in, and it's unaltered form from the first to the second reading. And minus insignificant changes. Significant change, if you make an amendment on second reading. And it's a significant change, which are monetary changes, this will be a significant change. Then we have to post it again in the newspaper, the, the amended per portion, the amended ordinance that y'all passed on. And that it will then have another public hearing and we'll have another second reading at the next meeting. Does that answer your question?
So the, so there would be action tonight, but as the first reading?
I, the action would be to pass it as, pass it if, if you so choose. What staff is proposing is pass it in its amended form.
As a first reading and, and be very intentional about saying it's a first reading.
Right, with the, with the, with the understanding that it will come back again to this council for second reading in order to be effective.
Sure.
And the proposed date to that to stay in line with us completing the audit by June thirtieth, we would bring this back to you at the June twenty sixth agenda.
Okay. Any further questions? I will entertain a motion to approve these, this item as amended for the first reading, for the first reading.
First reading, okay. I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will call for vote. All those in favor? Opposed. Nine, resolution. Unless otherwise specified, the city manager is authorized to execute all necessary documents upon final, final approval. By the city attorney, nine, one, resolution number, letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero three six. Calling a recall election for the position of council member District D. Here, would you like to? Uh, officially share with the council the uh, results of the petition?
Sure, sorry, give me just one second. Um, included in your packet, and I apologize, I'm getting back into the. Body of the agenda I was doing the minutes while you guys are talking, I'm sorry. Okay, so included in the supporting documents of the um. Of your agenda tonight, I included not only the resolution that would call for um. The action of uh, calling a recall, but also the letter that you all were issued. Um, regarding the certification of the recall petition. Um, it looks like we were able to identify. A total of a hundred and fifteen um, registered voters. Who, we were able to go ahead and verify those signatures, which was a sufficient amount of numbers, uh, sufficient amount of signatures to um, enact. The recall procedure. Um, just so the public is aware, I know we didn't have a meeting, a second meeting last month. This was issued to the council on May eighteenth, which does fall in line with our charter requirement.
Very good. I will entertain a motion.
They're moved.
Hold, hold up a minute, Michael. Hold on just a minute. I will entertain a motion on resolution number, a letter R dash two zero two three. Dash zero zero three six. Go, Michael.
They're moved.
There's a resolution, there's a, a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll let Mr. Ross have, have that second. Uh, is there any discussion on this matter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do, just for clarity, the. This motion. Is it, go ahead and set the election for November as well, right? Correct?
Yes, sir.
As, as I recall reading. And the reasoning for that, November?
Um, it's just in line, this language is just kind of standard in line with what the charter says. It says for you guys to hold the election at the next uniform election date. Um, if adjustments need to be made to that. Or, or being desired to be made to that, I will defer to legal, our attorney to see what he says.
Sure, um. The text, as Kiara said, the um, chart, the charter for the city of Lamar. Says that the recall election is to be held on the next allowable date. Um, to find the allowable date for these elections. We have to go to the election code, specifically chapter forty one, dealing with the timing of elections. The elections are, there are three times that elections can be held in the state of Texas absent the call of the governor. And the, the, these are not speaking to primaries, primaries are subject. Those are the first Saturday in May, in an odd numbered year. That's what we just had. The first Saturday in May in an even numbered year. Or as ordered by the governor. And then the first Saturday, uh, or I'm sorry, the first Tuesday after the first November, or after. Let me start that again. The first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. That is November seventh of this year. I understand that other cities in this county are having an election to fill a vacant. Council, the council position on, in August. Um, there are provisions of the state constitution that allow for that, that control over the election code. But those provisions deals solely with the filling of positions, not the removal. And the consequence of not having an election on a time ordered, allowed under the election code. Is that the election code goes on to say that those elections are void if you do not. So it's, they're not voidable, they are voided, there is, if they never occurred. Hence, that is why we have proposed, that is why the resolution states that it's being called for November seventh. The next uniform election date. And those, those deadlines um, that Kiara and I used when we put the resolution together. Were pulled directly from the Texas Secretary of State's um, office. They have a uniform election day and the. Um, accompanying calendars that go along with those.
So the distinguishing factor here as opposed to is, is. That council person in Santa Fe completely.
They're feeling, they're feeling a vacant.
A vacancy.
That is correct.
That's not our situation. So we come, alright. Thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion or questions concerning uh, nine, one? Hearing none will call for vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine, two, resolution number R dash two zero two three dash zero zero three seven. Accepting the preliminary plat of approximately six point four nine two acres located in the William K. Wilson League. Abstract number two zero eight. Mr. Garcia, is that you?
Yes, sir. Mayor and staff is here to answer any specific questions. This is uh, part of that uh. Partial of the um, Gulf Greyhound property. That there is proposed development, as was in your agenda package with all the backup documentation. Uh, we are seeking for your approval on this plat. It's already been a planning and zoning and was approved accordingly.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia on this item?
I, I, Mayor, I did want to point out something that I think is significant for all of us. In terms of a demonstration of, of what happens when you have. Someone willing to make this type of investment. If you look at the documentation that was included, the. One year, the property value taxable in there was twenty two thousand, as I recall. With the improvements and stuff that have been made over time, the tax, the tax. with the improvements and stuff that have been made over time, the tax, the taxes paid on that were in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars on that side.
Yeah.
So.
Any other comments, questions? Uh, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any further, any further discussion? Uh, we'll give it to Kim.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those, those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine three, resolution number, letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero three eight, issuing a conditional use permit for Hunt Energy Network Battery Storage Facility. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as well, staff is available uh for any questions uh deemed necessary. Um, this is another item that went to planning and zoning. This is for an area that is very close to our ETJ over on seventeen sixty four, as you approach Santa Fe, uh adjacent to a current property that has similar use at the Texas to Mexico satellite location. The authorization is in your package. I'll entertain questions or follow what concerns.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia related to item nine three? Go ahead, Jay.
I, I do have a question. The facility, what type of batteries are we talking about here?
If you guys can approach, please.
Counsel, Thomasall, EPC Director with Hunt Energy Network, happy to answer any questions. So specific to the question on the, the battery chemistry is a lithium ion phosphate. It's a the lowest energy density of the lithium ion battery chemistries. Uh, if you think of an NMC, that's in like a Tesla, that's super high energy density. This is not that. This is a relatively stable lithium ion phosphate chemistry.
But what, what's it, what's the size? What, what's the, what are you using it for?
That, the, the total plant size is a ten megawatt hour system, so it can inject ten megawatts worth of energy for approximately, excuse me, one hour. Uh, the system will be operating interconnected with Texas New Mexico's substation, so parallel operations with the facility, and will actually be dispatched via ERCOT, Energy Reliable Council of Texas. So uh ERCOT will basically have command of that facility and it'll be primarily used for energy stability, grid arresting, frequency arresting. Uh, so anytime the uh grid has instability, these systems are used to inject energy into the system fast acting. It's one of the only technologies ERCOT has as, has at its uh, has at its disposal to inject energy at fast pace.
So what, what protection, you said this was in the ETJ area of Lamar?
It's right before we get, it's, it's right before you leave Lamar connection.
But it's in the city of Lamar, so it's over District B.
It's in District B.
District B. What protection is there for the city of Lamar? If there's some sort of accident that occurs at this site, are you providing us? Uh, are you naming us as an additional insured or are we gonna have to sue you for damages? What, what's, what's our protection for our residents? That's a residential area.
Yeah, so, so we will work uh with the city as far as any kind of emergency operation procedures. We'll also have our standard operation procedures, so those will be developed in conjunction with presumably the city fire marshal, whoever needs to help um parallel construct that uh operation procedure. That's how we've done in other of our facilities. Currently, we're operating fourteen facilities in Texas. Uh, there's a roughly about two point five gigawatts of these uh facilities currently being utilized in ERCOT. So it's a fairly uh common system. I know batteries are kind of a new technology, but ERCOT's been using it for roughly about four years right now. Specific to our sites, uh, we design all of our sites with UL nine five four zero A compliance. So this is more of a proactive approach from a safety standpoint. So there's gonna be heat detection, smoke detection, gas detection, ventilation systems with inside these NEMA three arc enclosures. So the, the systems itself are in about, basically a three inch steel forty foot container. They're unmanned, they're completely autonomous, all encapsulated within the system. Uh, the only petroleum products on the facility are uh within the transformer, so similar to what the substation has. There's, there's medium voltage and low voltage transformers. Those transformers have uh a kinetic oil. But those kinetic oils are FR four biodegradable, so they aren't replaced routinely. This is like a twenty year replacement of these oils, uh but if they were actually to spill on the facility, they're completely biodegradable.
You didn't answer my question. I want to know what protection, financial protection exists for the city of Lamar in the event of some problem at the plant?
All of our facilities, I mean, we've, Hunt's been around since nineteen thirty four. We've been doing business in Texas. All of our facilities have umbrella insurance. Uh, don't quote me on this, but it's around twenty million per facility. Um, total umbrella insurance, so I mean, the sites are gonna be properly insured. Um, we've never, I, I, naming a, naming a city as a, an insured, I can't speak to if we can uh can actually do that. Uh, that's something we certainly can look at, and we certainly name any of our lessors or property owners.
Exactly.
In the insured policy, in this particular case, Hunt owns the facility uh or owns the property. We purchased it from Texas New Mexico Power. I'd be uh happy to take that back to our team and talk about what kind of insurance policy that the city can, can um, how that Hunt can adopt. We just haven't done that to date, so I can't speak to exactly what we could do there.
In my past life, when we were opening offices elsewhere, in some, especially in the Dallas area, North Dallas, Plano, Denton, we were required to add, add on perhaps a unit of government as an additional insured, especially if the franchisee was opening an office in the, in uh, in a city owned property or in economic development. So I urge us as a city to become an additional insured under their policy um just for our protection and for the protection, because if, if an event occurs there, it's not just your plant. There's an impact to the surrounding area, and Chief Merriman can attest to this. We may have uh shelters in place, we have a request to, to move people out. So there's housing that occurs. Where, where do these people go? Things of that nature, so, so I, I, and, and and there are people that have experienced this in their own, within our district that have seen this happen before as well too. I appreciate the council member Mitch Nitt as well, providing me some, providing the, all of us some information on that. So I would ask that we've, that we add, become an additional insured and you pursue that.
Very good. Uh, are you, are you encouraging that? Are you wanting to make that a part of this?
Part of the, the, that the direction.
Go ahead, Gus.
If that, if, if the motion is going, well, I, I'll, I'll let y'all finish.
Well, I, I think, I think we need direction at this point.
Sure. So if the motion is going to be to require them to do something before a CUP is issued, then this would need to be tabled so that we can look, so that they can look to see if they can do it. And so that we can look, see if that is in fact, that requirement is in fact legal.
Also, how do we feel about this?
We can wait to make sure.
Hmm, I'm good on table. And by the way, I, I, not to, to say I distrust you, but when you bring the ERCOT here, I have no trust for ERCOT. Okay, I'll be clear for that.
Unfortunately, uh, we all have a little uh different slided view on ERCOT as of late. That is the, the point of the batteries, right, is for grids.
I, I understand you're, you're sup, they're attempting to supplement the, the, the uh electric, electric availability of electricity. But once again, this is, like I said, ERCOT. So I, I would move the
Yeah, let me, before you move, let me, let me see if I can ask a question or two. Um, so I, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Thomasall, uh, Thomas?
Thomas. You said that the Hunt company was in this business for how long?
So, so Hunt has been in Texas operating since nineteen thirty four.
Operating as?
A, as primarily oil and gas operations. Uh, we've got utility infrastructure, we've got real estate, ranching. Uh, we've got renewable energy as well. I, I'm in charge of the battery division. We've been focused on batteries for the last three and a half years.
Three and a half years.
We've been under operation within the state of Texas. We're going on a little over twenty four months right now.
So, um I guess, question I think that most citizens would like to know, as we would deliberate on this uh at next meeting would be, how would this benefit us as a community? Would, would this help augment our uh power infrastructure when, when perhaps there are blackouts or brownouts or, or other issues that, that uh affect the power infrastructure? Would this help us because it's in our city?
That's correct. That is the primary focus of this facility is to inject energy when the, when the grid is unstable. Uh, we're, we're currently operating with Texas New Mexico Power on eight other facilities throughout the state. They have seen a positive relationship with these battery facilities specific to their substation. So in times of grid emergencies, that's when these batteries inject, that's when they step in. There's frequency excursion, so the grid is running at sixty hertz. If we start dipping to fifty nine hertz or fifty nine, you know, point two hertz, you're gonna start to see flickers, you're gonna start to see issues with your local grid infrastructure. It may seem minute, it may seem like a shimmer of the lights, that has long term effects on your, your appliances, on your systems, on, on the grid, grid system in general. So uh, that is the primary focus uh that these systems are been constructed for, and that's ERCOT's primary focus of dispatching aids. They're dispatched through a service, it's called ancillary services. And effectively, those are grid arresting services that ERCOT has at its disposal to inject energy into the grid in times of urgency.
Okay. Um, Chief Mayor, would you approach, please? Yes, sir. Would you help us to understand this, this operation and any potential danger that this may be uh for our citizens or the, the community around which the?
So I, we haven't seen a set of plans, so I don't know exactly what they're, the only concern that we would have by our safety side is with lithium ion batteries, there's a chance of damage. If they get damaged, you can have what's called a thermal runaway. And what happens when the, the lithium ion battery is put together, there's a thin piece of paper or plastic between the two chemicals. If that battery is damaged, it gets hit, somebody runs into the facility. And the battery is damaged, you may not know it right away, but what will happen is it will start a chain reaction that engineers don't like to call fire, they like to call it a thermal runaway. Can't put it out. You can douse it with, I mean, it's just like a Tesla car, they had to bury one and put thirty thousand gallons of water on it to decrease the temperature to stop the flames. But once the battery goes into a thermal runaway, those two chemicals, it's basically like a sparkler. Combustible metals, once you light it, you can't stop it until it, till it burns itself out. Um, I would be concerned about damage, that would be my only. If it, if those two chemicals burn, it's still a, it's still a product of combustion, just like you would have in a house fire. Other than, you know, typical water's not gonna put it out, like, like we're used to.
Okay.
The uh, so the, the concern I would have is damage from, you know, a vehicle running into it, but I don't know where it's gonna sit on the property. I haven't seen it, haven't seen the set of plans, I mean. If they, if they were to, you know, design it appropriately, there, there's a possibility.
Possibly minimize the risk.
Sure.
Right, right.
That, that's the major, when it comes to those types of batteries, the major concern that we, we would have as a community would be thermal runaway and how bad it, it affects how close to the grid system it is, because if that thermal runaway, if it does have a thermal runaway and that battery sets Texas New Mexico's plant on fire, now we're in, I mean, that's a worst case scenario, obviously, but
Yeah.
Again, without seeing a, without seeing a set of plans or uh a layout or anything, I
Yeah.
I would be, that would be my only concern.
Yeah, um, uh, thank you for that. Does it, does anybody have any questions for uh, for Chief Mayorman?
No, I do, I do have a question for the young man that was
Okay, let, let's do this. Uh, what, what I would, before we table, Susan, we need to have those questions answered for the council in a very layman like presentation uh so that we can make sure that we're uh understanding the operation and, and how we need to safeguard for, for any potential uh disaster or damage. Um. Thomas, would you approach again? Uh, Councilwoman Yancy has a question for you.
Hang on.
Thank you, Chief.
I just
And can I, sorry, I've got another comment too, just, sorry, what's the question?
No, I, I just wanted to ask, um, what are your comparable cities? What, what other cities are, are you all in?
Uh, so
Like in our county, are you in our county?
Actually, there's an active facility, not, not operated by uh my company. There's an active facility uh in League City. And we're actually developing another facility in League City as well, uh so that'd be the, the closest uh facilities. Um, and then in Texas City, excuse me. Uh, that's the closest here in Galveston County. We've got many operations in Bakers County, Reeves County, uh City of Junction. We have a number of plants in South Texas. Um, again, we have twenty active facilities today.
So this is becoming a standard practice, basically, to hold the grid?
There, there's definitely a push um for energy storage, specifically batteries within ERCOT. This is um, is a new technology, but it's coming. I mean, everybody is starting to develop it. One hundred percent, I understand the concerns, uh, because it is a new technology. And so trying to unlock any of those concerns, mitigate the risk, uh, you know, that's what we need to make sure, we ensure counsel so that you guys are comfortable with the, the operation and, and, you know, especially working with y'all's code and fire marshal in order to ensure that you guys are comfortable with uh the current configuration. I will say, uh, just regarding the UL nine five four zero standards regarding the thermal propagation. So every one of the battery cells, there's over ten thousand sensors on the facility, monitoring the site actively twenty four seven. So if there were any uncharacteristic events, the system will start to shut itself down and D-rate immediately. These D-rates don't happen when you have a thermal runaway event. They, they are happening when you're starting to operate the system at excess levels, not, not emergency levels, but excess levels. The system's gonna start shutting itself down. So it's a very proactive safety system. Uh, like I said, all of our sites are meeting UL nine five four zero A or closely to, to hit the NFPA eight fifty five. That's gonna be working with the city, making sure that you guys are comfortable with how we have the, the safety parameters, not only in our emergency operation plan, uh but just our standard operation plan, and then what does that reaction look like? Uh, what does that response look like? How is, how are the, the facilities um designed and then how are personnel trained to react in that? So all of that stuff, I mean, that's, that's part of um you know, the civil and the building permit applications, that's where we want to work with your team to say, what exactly, this is what we're doing on other facilities? How do you guys want us to design the sites? Um, I think there is a preliminary site layout in the submission, so hopefully take a look at that as well. Um, that's showing the standard offsets. So in the unlikely event, one of the containers of the three were to catch on fire, the offsets are in code to mitigate any kind of propagation to any other infrastructure, certainly other batteries, but also any adjacent facilities. Um, again, TNP is not gonna sell us the land to put this facility if they weren't uh concerned with risk as well. We have an operating history with them, so um, I'll, I'll just
You're, you're, your discussion and thanks, Councilwoman Yancy, that was a question I had, other areas. I'd like to see the list of that when you're providing this further information, but is there a useful life for the, for this battery?
Well, our estimate is about ten years.
So what, what happens and after the end of that ten years, does that, is that gonna go in our landfill here in San Antonio?
No, sir. So this material, these metals are extremely valuable. Uh, there's a lot of companies that are actually recycling batteries today because of how valuable these materials are. Uh, so um, you know, in ten years, this interconnection is actually extremely valuable uh to the grid, to our company as well. So we would be evolving the generation source there. What, what is the technology look like in ten years? It could be LFP batteries, it could be another kind of storage facility. Uh, but our, our estimation is that we would continue to supply it with great batteries, um, because that's the technology right now that is available and valuable for us.
And assuming that there's a conditional use permit that's granted at some point, that there's, now you're gonna start pay, playing, I'm sorry, paying property tax on your facility?
That's correct. Uh, we own the facility today, so we, we will start, uh, it's present within the last sixty or thirty days. And so we will be paying property taxes. Uh, the facilities are in excess of four million dollars. It's, it's point five acres, we're gonna occupy about point three. The land, as we see it, is not valuable for any other commercial operations. There's underground uh electrical lines that TNP utilizes outside of the station. So we've kind of perfectly fit based on what they recommend us to be, um, and that they cannot use. So we were strategic working with TNP on this location's not valuable for them, and it doesn't and it doesn't seem very valuable for any other commercial use.
Yeah, thank you.
So my only broad part of this would be, I think you would make citizens feel better if they could see, read and understand your fire mitigation, any disaster plans that you had to go along with your plant, just to make, give them a warm fuzzy on on everything that you plan on doing to keep us safe.
Right. Okay.
I will entertain a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
There is no uh, conversation or deliberation or discussion on the table, so we'll entertain a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine four, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero three nine, authorizing the reconstruction of a local bridge along Oak Oak Street in the city of Lamarck, Texas. Caesar.
Yes, uh, thank you. I know Rick is there. Should you have any questions? We are happy to report that it is time to move forward with some more infrastructure. We are announcing the um, Oak Street Bridge Project. Um, so we're very excited about this project. It is roughly six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars uh, in in infrastructure available to the city through grant funding through our uh, text relationship with Tech Stop. That will uh, allow us to get more uh, newer bridge infrastructure. Our match along this line is not a match specifically towards a project, as long as we put ten percent towards uh, a drainage project in the city. And currently, we have two other drainage projects we're working on, one in Mysteria and one, obviously, that we have planned for the West Lawn area. So we'll be more than able to satisfy this match already through what uh, uh, process that we have going through other projects. Uh, that being said, all the information's in your package. We'll entertain any other questions.
Any questions for Caesar or Rick? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you know, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nine five, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero four zero, acknowledging the relationship between the Lamarck Garden Club and the city of Lamarck. Caesar.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we're bringing forward the fact that we're coming forward with all of our partners uh, eventually to bring uh, some form of way to articulate what our relationships are. This item, we're excited to bring forward. We we've brought to you one uh, several already thus far. This one with our garden club, our garden club is responsible for maintaining the front lawn area. They've also done some work in our PD and or fire stations. And uh, in exchange, they actually get a chance to meet, use a community room. Uh, and they're asked for simple, just allow them to please keep using our water uh, and then keep using any electricity they might need for shrinker or whatever might happen. Um, we felt that this was prudent to bring forward, that we can relax relationships that we have with any other parties. And we can entertain any questions you may have specific to this MOU.
Any questions for Caesar as related to this item? Hearing now, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item ten, City Manager's Report, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you again, Mayor. Uh, we'd like to take a moment to recognize a lot of the activity that we've got going on uh, throughout the actual city. We've got the recognition of some of our uh, Lamarck Police Officers as as is included in the report. Uh, we also have uh, the fact that we need to bring back to you, we're formally requesting this, the citywide sanitary sewer inflow and filtration reduction project rebid, which is the one having to do with our manholes. Uh, those bids, similar to the other one that we brought to you as D two A for the drainage project, uh, is once again uh, coming extremely high. So we are going to formally bring that back to you on the twenty sixth to formally reject those, so we can go back out to rebid that project, so we can try to get some traction on that. Third item that's on there as well is our auction item. Those are all the things that are up for auction. Uh, again, this is part of our uh, projects that we have to clean up our public works yard and or any other facilities that we have. Uh, part of our three year plan to get things tidied up.
And it is, any questions for Ms. Garcia concerning the City Manager's Report?
Uh, Mr. Garcia, on that um, the rebid, this is uh, along with the budget, it's an area that I think all of us have heard that the community is asking for more clarity as to the the something that it it's it's worth re- repeat uh, repeating, right? The project management, what's the timeframe and uh, things of this nature? Because certainly for, even before you came along, this was a big pipe in terms of our new drain holes, covers and stuff, so.
Certainly, um, well, we were saddened as we were, and and Rick's available for additional question. We were sad when we saw some of the bids coming in as as we experienced through the uh, um, West Lawn project, that a lot of them were just much higher. Um, we are working on ways to uh, better market and 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 to educate uh, folks on what's going on. This is one of those facets that we're bringing forward by letting you know publicly what's happening with this particular one. Uh, you, we 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 brought to you the other one uh, back to you as far as supporting you, but the support that you guys garnered to make sure that we get that project going. Um, so we're going to continue bringing those forward and continuing to showcase exactly what we're doing. Um, this project is one that we we desperately need to deal with our I and I. And um, you know, it's it's just a sad predicament. We're under a lot of these projects are coming in uh, over bid. Uh, Rick, would you like to chime in on anything specific to that?
I know. I think you pretty much covered it. Um, engineering is looking at some alternatives and breaking the bid out a little bit differently as far as what we refer to as add alternates. So the base bid uh, scope will be a little bit less than what it is right now as far as what the uh, the work is to be done on on the manholes. Um, and there's some pipeline lining on that project also.
Any further questions? Thank you, Rick. Thank you. Uh, Caesar, we'll now move item eleven, new business items presented to the council for discussion and possible action. Eleven one, request for proposal, authorizing publication of a request for proposal for disaster and or storm recovery services. Caesar.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item is one that's um, one that we carry with a great possible threat. Obviously, in a case of an emergency, these are services that are absolutely needed in order of an emergency. This is an RFP that would go out to help us clear the roads following a storm. Uh, it would, a part of this RFP would include making sure we're staging uh, vehicles and equipment ahead of a storm. Once, once one is announced, uh, then immediately afterwards activating so we can clear the streets for emergency services and or folks that need to get to and pro. Um, similar to what we need to just have each time that we're in hurricane season, I hate to even say the word, and hopefully we never have to use these services. However, we want to be prepared should the case of emergency arise.
I will entertain a motion.
I I I have a question about it. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so we're only posting this for four days? It's only been posted four days?
The idea to post it, actually, this this one should be posted. And again, it has to do with when we tried to bring it originally, so now it actually will have to be amended to be posted for the full suite.
For the full, so to be posted, how how long?
Uh, assuming that we posted today being the twelfth, fourteenth, fourteen plus uh, fourteen, so through the twenty, through Wednesday after our next meeting. But we won't be able to hear an awardee until more than likely the first meeting in July. But following with all of our procurement policies, we'll have to make sure that it's posted at adequate amount of time.
Okay, so on here it says issuance of RFP June twelve, you're saying to that that the deadline would be June sixteen or no?
No, ma'am.
That's going to change.
That's going to all change for two weeks. Unfortunately, when we brought this forward originally, there were some things we needed to find too, and then legal had to review before we bring it forward. Ideally, we were supposed to pass it the last meeting. It would have gone live today.
So would that be changed?
Yes, sir.
Is that? Maybe you know, is that? It'll be. If 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 is that enough of a change to uh, have an amendment? Because that's, that date is important. We can't say on here that we're closing it on the sixteenth if we're extending it. It has to match.
Um, you guys can make a motion and amend the the closing date.
Yeah, let's do that. And that way we're we're okay. So Kim, could you make that motion?
Sure. Um, I make the motion.
Wait, wait, wait. Stop, stop. Do we even have a motion in the first place?
We don't, we don't.
Okay. So uh, let's let's make that motion as and 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 add the amendment to the.
When I?
Make the motion to approve, make the motion to approve with the with the amendment of the change in date from the sixteenth to whatever Mr. Garcia said, twenty years.
Yes, okay. I make the motion that we approve uh, this RFP and and amend the timeframe uh, for some middle deadline to June twentieth. That was it?
Twenty six.
Just twenty eight.
Twenty.
June twenty eight.
Twenty.
To June twenty eight, twenty twenty three.
So the deadline has been moved to June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So the new deadline is June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. I will entertain a, uh, let's call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? There you are. Item eleven two, request for proposal, authorizing publication of a request for proposal for disaster debris monitoring and consulting services, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I would recommend possibly a similar amendment as such for for this item. Uh, this item is for more for the monitoring and the management, as you guys know. Um, in this case, a group would be necessary to manage all the different companies that we would have picking debris uh, located, making sure that the amounts are are documented correctly, and that all monitoring services are are accounted for. Um, I I will entertain any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? We do know that we have to make the same amendment. Outside of that, any other questions? I will entertain that motion, Mr. Yancy.
Same. I I make the motion that we approve for this and extend the deadline to the proper two weeks, which will be
June twenty eighth.
June twenty eight, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item eleven three, upcoming events.
Yes, thank you. Wanted to make it aware to the public that we will be uh, uh, closed in recognition of our Juneteenth uh, commemoration on Monday, June nineteenth. Uh, we're also certainly scheduled to have a youth fishing and kayaking event at Howland Bayou Park on June twenty first. Sorry, I'm going to slow down so Kyle can keep up with all the different postings. Um, also, we are having a rock painting party on June twenty third at our uh, central fire station. And lastly, we want to make sure everybody marks their calendars for kickoff to Parks Month, which will be our first annual Life and Liberty in Lamarck, which will be held at also at Howland Bayou Park. It'll be a day long day facilities, uh, kicking off with a kids' fish event early in the morning, usually as at nine AM and uh, and and closing with a fireworks show at uh, nine PM. One item that is not on here that I've received afterward, just to let you guys know, and a formal stuff will be going out, we'll be formally announcing our uh, groundbreaking for our uh, West Lawn area. Uh, we're still finalizing details, and we will let everybody know when that will take place. And that concludes our report of upcoming events.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Uh, before we go into executive session, council, we have uh, if you have items for the good of the order, you may um, submit those at this time. Any persons having items for the good of the order? Who wants to go first? Michael says no. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, you can nail a fight.
Um, so I want to say thank you for hosting the Juneteenth Gala. My mother had a great time at it, even though Mr. Keith asked if she was my wife. We're having issues with dumping again in District D specifically. Uh, so Susan and I need to get together, but there's Avenue D on the corner. There is a couple dumpsters, but see, people seem to be missing them. Avenue D and Texas Avenue. Um, I'm getting, I don't, I know it's been over a year, but I'm still getting um, hearing lots of complaints about the chicken ordinance. I don't know if people don't understand what's going on with it or how to mitigate the issues. So if we can somehow put on the website some further clarification, so people can understand what they need to do with it. Uh, and along with the June fourth, Life and Liberty, Miss Alizar is planning on doing a cleanup in District D with one couple of her groups that she's uh, attached to and trying to do a first Saturday of the month through that area for pickup and cleanup and stuff. So if we can get volunteers for that, it would greatly be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Yancy, you climbing on up there in seniority, huh?
Um, just want to thank the staff and the community for the uh, amazing Juneteenth Gala uh, that we experienced on Friday, uh, Friday night. Um, want to make some suggestions to uh, have a committee, have staff, have community persons and start planning maybe the third week in January of twenty twenty four. And let's try to cons- try to get that 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 date that we talked about, uh, that it won't collide with some of the other Juneteenth activities. This is Juneteenth season. Happy Juneteenth. Um, encouraging residents to go and visit. Um, we have an amazing he- history in Galveston County because uh, this is one of the oldest counties in in the state and one of the oldest slave counties in the state. There's a, there's a lot of history that a lot of us don't know about, so I encourage you to be real intentional this month and go to the Juneteenth Museum in Galveston that a lot of people don't know about, have not engaged in that. And to um, go to restaurants that are owned by people of of color um, as well as to learn more about this amazing history that is our own in Galveston County. And then we have set the national narrative on what Juneteenth is and what it means. So um, let's support that. Um, the other thing is I'm looking forward to July first because I love American history as well, and I was upset that it rained, that we didn't get the fireworks and all that. And that same day in in is a soul food festival, the first annual soul food festival uh, in that afternoon in Texas City. So I'm looking forward to going to that at Rue Daddy's and then coming to the festival, I mean, to the the lights display at our park. So a lot of fun things. Um, I am a swimmer. I'm going to encourage everyone to be very careful about your children and water this summer. Um, please, uh, Caesar, maybe get some fun facts or something out about water safety if we can, perhaps um, to our residents, just to remind them about the dangers of uh, swimming or swimming lessons, getting some uh, that's near and dear to my heart because I'm an avid swimmer, love swim, and I just, it just, it pains me to see when our babies are drowning, uh, our people are drowning. So just something to think about. Looking forward to the next Inside Lamarck that's coming out. And I think that, oh, the other thing, the um, we can put on the agenda Bobby Beach. I would like to talk about that on the next agenda. And also uh, for the agenda, the um, the event, the um, building list, we can try to get at least a partial list, so we can start kind of gauging through that. And also, we had a good meeting with EDC this past week. We want to get that workshop uh, on the calendar as we talked about, so we can kind of get deepened, deepened down, take a deeper dive into our EDC and um, the council. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy.
May I approach him?
Thank you. But number one, I want to say thanks to um, both the staff and um, Chief Mayorman. Chief Mayorman and I attended the Texas Emergency Management Conference, Emergency Management Conference in Fort Worth. The the uh, lesson to be learned from that, I think uh, chief was number one is that especially smaller communities, we're all struggling financially. Uh, that um, T D M, Texas Department of Emergency Management, seems to have a lot of funding available to it. Uh, we need to figure out how to, how to best work with our local communities to identify that as a funding source, because uh, we have a re- a greater possibility of getting funding if we work collectively uh, as opposed to individually. And uh, the other item that at least I picked up from those elected officials that attended that is that smaller cities, and I say smaller cities, homeworld cities with populations of under twenty five thousand are really struggling in terms of uh, the the monies to identify uh, individuals and to keep emergency management staff aboard. Uh, so that's also, and last thing is more and more cities are actually calling upon their own and city council representatives, mayors in some cities are doing more work uh, to take a more active role in terms of some of the requirements uh, when uh, when that's happened on on what did you mention? Yes. And so Mayor, we're a lot more, a lot more coming down. Um, I also want to say thank you. It was the most enjoyable, the Juneteenth Gala. Thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager for your emceeing of the event. Uh, everything was very professionally done. The food was great. I apologize for not uh, I apologize for not, uh, going up to the stage, but I realized that I, unlike Ms. Yancy, that I would look bad for me to come and ask Mayor to please help me go up. So, uh, I defer to you, Mayor, in terms of that responsibility, because my, my knees just wouldn't, uh, help get up those stairs there. And, um, the last thing is during the retreat, we heard one interesting statistic from our city attorney here that there are approximately five hundred homeowners here in the city of Lamarck that are, um, the some in delay in terms of their property taxes. Is that accurate?
If you do a search on the Galveston County District Clerk's website for the city of Lamarck, there are, oh, there appear to be from that site over five hundred active cases involving that.
Involving that. And having said that, I, I want to urge everybody in Lamarck and everybody in our local communities. There is an organization, a nonprofit group that is a grantee of the Texas Homeowners Assistance Fund. And we're fortunate to have them here present. They're live. It's not some number that you call and you get some artificial intelligence and give us a key word. You're actually speaking to live people, and that's chosen once Outreach Ministry over on Sixth Street in Texas City. And they are a grantee of the Texas Homeowners Assistance Fund, which still has a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars of funds available if you are delinquent in your taxes or your insurance or, um, there's one other area, oh, or utility payments. Those three areas are applicable. So I urge you to pick up the phone and contact them, and the city will be, will be posting this more information. But it's four oh nine, two two nine, one three nine four, four oh nine, two two nine, one three nine four. Uh, after all, if they're helping you pay your property taxes, we'd be very grateful for the city to have that income, uh, from the property taxes on that side. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, I wanted to welcome our interns, uh, this summer. They are always a breath of fresh air, and they bring tremendous energy. Uh, and I believe that we're educating an entire generation, uh, on municipal government, but, uh, on public service, even more importantly. I wanted to also congratulate those members of the Lamarck Police Department that were recognized uh, here in the City Manager's Report. We want to always, always, always recognize those public servants, uh, whether they be police or fire or code enforcement or public works, uh, when, when they perform above and beyond the call of duty. So we want to congratulate those members of the Lamarck Police Department. Uh, I would like to also add to my apprec- the appreciation for our, our, our staff with my own personal appreciation, uh, for this, uh, our inaugural Juneteenth Gala. Uh, it was a very nice event. I, I think everyone enjoyed themselves. Um, a- and what I like most about it is what I, I hope we would, uh, carry as a tradition, Mr. Garcia. It was free. It was free to, to any of our residents, uh, first come, first served basis, uh, and I think that we should continue that tradition. Uh, we want to allow, as we grow, our residents an opportunity to come and celebrate and, uh, in their own city, uh, amongst their own neighbors and, and their community members. So I'm excited about that. Again, thank you all for the work that you all did, uh, in preparation for, uh, and, and execution of that day. Uh, Ms. Kiara, Ms. Michaela leading, I think, the charge, uh, in that, in that endeavor. Lastly, I'd like to say happy Father's Day to all of our fathers. Uh, and, um, certainly I acknowledge you, uh, being a father. Uh, it's a, it's a, an important job in our community, in our society, uh, and fathers should, uh, get more credit uh, when they do the right thing. And so happy Father's Day to all of our fathers in this community. Uh, there's nothing further. Uh, I believe we have an executive session tonight. And so we'll allow Mr. Garcia to, uh, make final comments and we'll move toward our executive session. I'm sorry, Michael. Did I forgive? No, Michael said no. Yeah, Michael said no. Yeah.
He said he didn't want to go first.
Did you say you didn't want to go first, or did you say you didn't want, want to go at all?
I just don't want to go first.
Oh, well, well, have at it.
I just want to say thank you for everyone. Um, staff, you guys do such hard work. Uh, Fire Department, I follow you guys all the time and you're always posting every day, so keep up the good work. Uh, please, same thing. You guys are the unsung heroes. Um, I see all the reports. So, thank you. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Garcia.
And, uh, Mayor, I just want to apologize to those members of the public and even, uh, a- any staff or, uh, council who have any trouble with our new Zoom link. We are changing platforms, so there may be some technical difficulty to start the meeting. We apologize. We are working that out. But it all, it is always available through our YouTube as well as to follow our link, uh, that's posted on our city agenda. So we apologize for any inconvenience, anybody. But, um, we're trying to increase our efficiencies and, and offer the best service possible for our residents.
Very good. Item twelve, executive session. The City Council, uh, for the City of Lamarck, Texas, Texas reserves the right to adjourn to executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed above, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five five one, dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one dot zero seven two, deliberations about real property, uh, five five one dot zero seven three, deliberations about gifts and donations, five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters, five five one dot zero seven six, deliberations about security devices, five five one dot zero eight seven, economic development. Tonight, uh, we will, uh, go into executive session, uh, twelve one, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, Lamarck Economic Development Corporation versus Texas City Terminal Railway Company. We will, um, recess this meeting at?
Seven thirty-nine.
And enter executive session at seven thirty-nine as well.
Thank you.